Good morning. Please take your seats. And if you would, please take a moment to silence your cellphones so that they don't If you would, please rise. Father, we thank you for the privilege of joining together here as free men and women to decide our own fate and to govern ourselves. Pray that the things that we say and the things that we do will be pleasing in your sight, and we ask in Jesus' name and for His sake. Amen. I believe it's Commissioner Salter's turn for the prayer.
First off, do we have any changes, additions, Commissioner Salter?
No addition, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole?
No additions.
Commissioner Lynchard?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody from the staff? Okay, we'll move into the Economic Development Committee chaired by Commissioner Salter. Commissioner Salter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three items today. First is discussion of FY 2013-2014 Team Florida Partnership Program Commitment Agreement, including allocation of $25,000 from the electorate franchise fees for local match. And I would ask Shannon Ovaltree to come forward and give us some additional information.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to present this partnership with Enterprise Florida. The state has developed a marketing program that they're asking the communities and the utility companies to buy into. Melissa Melody here from the Enterprise Florida, she's the chief marketing officer for the state, is here to present this. This is a nice program. We visit with site selectors throughout the United States, and through this opportunity we build relationships, they get to know the counties, they get to know the regions. And as I was just telling Melissa earlier, that there's actually a site selector I'm working with now, they just contacted me last week, that I met through one of these events. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Melissa.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here. Ladies, thank you. If we could roll the PowerPoint that I sent. I have just a brief presentation. I know your schedule is very tight this morning, but I wanted to give you an overview of this partnership program. The basis first. Thank you very much. So, in the state of Florida, we're all familiar with the efforts that are done to promote tourism in the state. As a matter of fact, as a state government body, we are wisely setting aside $100 million this year to promote tourism in a goal of reaching over 100 million visitors. But what do we do to promote the rest of business in the state? Whether it's here in Santa Rosa County, or whether it's in Fort Lauderdale, what do we do? How much is set aside to promote all the other range of businesses throughout the state? I think you'd be surprised to find out we make zero available. No money, none. And that's because for so long, as a state, we haven't been hungry when it comes to economic development. We could rely on tourism, and only at the community level were we very aggressive in promoting our assets and trying to reach out to site selectors and to CEOs to promote ourselves for business and to diversify our economy. Well, with this administration and with Gray Swope at the helm of Enterprise Florida, serving as Secretary of Commerce, he brought with him that sense of urgency that if we're going to make our mark as individual counties, as individual communities, and as a state, now's the time. Now's the time, at that point, as the economy was still languishing with, in Florida, an unemployment rate of just over 11%, that we had to do something dramatic. And so, when we came in, and I say we, Gray came over from Mississippi after serving under Governor Barber for eight years, and I served under Governor Barber for five years, Governor Scott asked him to come over. So what we did was assess what we were missing here as a state. In Florida, by far, coming from a much smaller state with fewer resources, you are living in the promised land. This state has everything it needs to be very prosperous in all of its communities. One of the things, though, that I noticed that was missing was, number one, we didn't have a sites and buildings database to even get our arms around our inventory as a state, nor did we have a means to tell the story. There was no advertising, there was no public relations, there was no aggressive outreach outside of the state to tell CEOs what we are and who we are as a business superstate. And so, working with people like Shannon, with people who are their economic development leaders throughout the state, we put together a partnership that would allow us not just to raise the money to tell our message, but to create a mechanism so that all of our voices are heard. So that Santa Rosa County's message is heard just as Naples' message is heard, or Gainesville's message is heard, when we're speaking outside the state, and that we're speaking with one voice so that people understand what we have to offer. So, as Shannon may have told you, the objectives of this partnership is to be able to communicate with one voice, what we have to offer as a business superstate. And then to create awareness and interest from these key audiences, site selectors, who are the influencers in business decisions when it comes to a business choosing where they're going to locate, and then the CEOs and other C-level individuals who actually make those choices. Then, the objective of the partnership is to co-brand, co-market, to help perpetuate a campaign that's ongoing, and to be supportive for funds that we are asking the legislature to make available. We have requested $3 million recurring to be able to promote the state for business, and this is purely marketing and communications funds. It would not be used for anything else. And then finally, in all states that have a successful economic development partnership program, such as the Texas One program, or the Georgia Allies program, this program becomes a resource to incoming leadership, so that if there was a change in leadership at Enterprise Florida, if we have a governor perhaps, whose focus is in economic development, maybe we might have a governor whose focus is protecting the environment, and so, they may not be as forward-thinking in the economic development realm, this partnership allows continuity to be able to bridge that time, so that not only does that administration know the direction that the communities and the state are going, it's already in place, it's already moving forward, but the communities always have that voice at the table. So, sorry. Should've been driving as I was talking. Okay, got you. So, to date on this program, we've raised just over $1.25 million. And this was, again, from a start last year of zero. Out of that, Enterprise Florida has put in roughly $400,000, the first year, $400,000, the second year, seed money, and then Florida Power and Light made $100,000 available to us. The rest of the communities you see there, other than Gulf Power and TECO, are all community partners and regional partners who have supported this to try to help us get this started. And what we did, and I know these ads are very small, we'll send them to you as individuals if you're interested, but we actually worked with a group in going through the branding process to help us be sure that the story that we're telling is the total Florida story. And so, one of the questions that we asked, and we talked to over 1,000 individuals, both outside of the state and inside of the state, one of the questions we asked them was, is Florida's tourism brand, which is known worldwide, without a doubt, we have the best tourism brand on the planet, does it help us or hinder us when we are promoting ourselves for business? And by far, the response to that was absolutely, it does not hinder us, that we should play on what is known about Florida and to teach people what is not known. And so, what image do most people have of Florida? Sun and sand, without a doubt. We realize as a state that we're far more than the beautiful beaches that surround two-thirds of the state, but people on the outside, that's the image they have of us. And it's a very positive image, so we want to keep that. And so, you'll see that the creative focus then of the campaign was to use these elaborate sand sculptures, again, playing on what people know, to teach them what they don't know, that we have one of the number-one workforces in America, that the size of our economy, that not only are we the fourth-largest economy in the United States, but we're the 21st-largest economy in the world, just behind Turkey, those Ottomans beat us out again, and that we have an incredible logistics and transportation system, and that we are the gateway to South America and to the world through our ability to export all around the edge of the state. So, I know you can't read this, don't even try. This is the overview of what we have envisioned with this $1.25 million to date. This just gives you an idea of the types of, different types of promotions that we're using that money to do, in advertising, in communications, in television, and in events such as the ones that Shannon mentioned, whether it's doing private events at Cornet and IMC, which are the largest gatherings of site selectors nationwide, or whether it's private in-state events or out-of-state events, where we're going to the markets where the CEOs and site selectors gather. Just to give you a quick overview, and again, I'm not going to take a lot of your time, to date, this campaign that we've rolled out, we've used in the print media, we've done a special section through Business Week that reached 980,000 individuals, we have done special outreach in all of the major site selector publications, and then a Fortune cover wrap that's going to 1,000 targeted CEOs, both the Fortune 500 CEOs, and then 500 CEOs of top manufacturing companies. That has been in place over six months, and we're upping it for another six months. To date, we have 2.5 million impressions. Why am I telling you this? Because your team here, on their own, could never do this unless you had a $1.25 million budget that you could allow them to use. Together, we can do this. There's very few communities in the state that can do this. Digital campaign, CNBC, Fox News, The Economist, Wall Street Journal, you'll see that the click-through rates on those, at the lowest, Wall Street Journal is 0.5%, and that The Economist, 1.5%. The average, the national average click-through rate is 0.03%. So on all of those, we're getting outstanding follow-through that will convert then into leads. And then, just to let you know, all of those leads go to our website, and then we work with the communities to convert these to actual projects. Before we started doing our advertising, just through our communications process, the first eight or nine months, we had approximately 12,000 visitors to our state. In the first three weeks that we started the aggressive advertising and the digital, we had 25,000, just in three weeks doubling it. So, some of the events that Shannon mentioned that have been so helpful to him and the other economic developers in the state, and that is the private events and dinners that we do in association with some of the major gatherings of these key audiences, and then going in-market and doing day-long visits with these site selectors. That's something that would be very difficult on a local level for you to budget, for your professional to be able to do that, and we try to gather these groups together and present a unified force. And then, finally, one of the things also that we do that helps you at the local level, but then promotes Florida as a superstate, is aggressive communications, and that is working with Shannon so that when you have a good story to tell, one of your businesses may be doing something in R&amp;D capacity that's not being done anywhere else in the world, or perhaps you cited recently a business that is going to change the local landscape. These are stories that we can push out in a much broader scale than you can just locally, and so we work together to try to do that. And also, working on internal CEO events. Finally, one thing that we have been able to do, even with the limited budget, is that is develop a television commercial, two of them, that will run adjacent to business and business news programming on channels like Fox News, CNBC. We're being laser-focused with this, because we do have a very limited budget, to those programs that CEOs routinely watch, and running it over a longer amount of time but lower repetition. So I think, at the last thing I'd like to show you, if we could roll the 30-second commercial, and then I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have about the partnership itself. Just to give you a little overview, the thing behind this is having CEOs in the state of Florida speak to other CEOs. So again, playing on people, what people know, to teach them what they don't know about the state. While they're getting that queued up, what we're trying to accomplish with the funds that are raised...
Florida has the best climate you'll find anywhere. Florida has all the horsepower I need to build a smarter team. Florida has the power to move anything I need at the speed of light. When it comes down to business, Florida has the best climate you'll find anywhere. Florida has all the horsepower I need to build a smarter team. Florida has the power to move anything I need at the speed of light. From engineers to technicians, Florida's high-tech talent pool can help your business really take off. There's never been a better place to let your business shine. Florida, the perfect climate for business.
So I'm not sure if you recognize the beach that Carol Craig was standing in front of, but we actually had the agency come over here to shoot. That's right, you can't match that beautiful water anywhere else. And it happened to be 44 degrees that morning, and they had to do that shot of them walking through the water. Our agency said, "We're going to charge you double time for that." So, ladies and gentlemen, what I would respectfully ask, if you would consider being a part of this partnership that would allow your economic development team broader access to CEOs and to site selectors working together with us, but then also helping us promote Florida as a business superstate? I'll happily answer any questions you might have.
Coming over this morning and sharing that with us, and we appreciate everything that Enterprise Florida does to help not only promote the state of Florida, but Santa Rosa County as well. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to support this because I've always felt like you've got to have a seat at the table, otherwise you're going to be left out. So, my recommendation is going to be that we move this to Thursday's agenda for further consideration.
Without objection.
Without objection.
It passes. Thank you so much for your time and your presentation. We're 100% behind this, and you might find a bigger partner than Santa Rosa County, but not a stronger one.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
I appreciate you all.
Mr. Chairman, next item is discussion of FY 2013-2014 Florida Defense Infrastructure Grant Agreement in the amount of $200,000 for continuation of property acquisition proximate to NS Whiting Field and Outlying Fields. As you recall, a few months back, we applied for the Defense Infrastructure Grant and the Defense Reinvestment Grant. We were fortunate enough again this year to be awarded in both categories, and for the Defense Infrastructure Grant was $200,000 for continuation of property acquisition around Whiting Field. Some people have asked questions about, "Which parcels are you going to purchase?" And News Journal wrote an article that said, "You don't have a plan in place." We've had a plan in place for 15 years. It's that big old huge map. So we know exactly what we're doing and the parcels from willing sellers that our county attorney, Ms. Jones, and Randy Roy worked with. So here again, we're very fortunate, and we appreciate the governor, our legislatures, for continuing to be able to fund these defense infrastructure grants. So I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, my third item is discussion FY 2013-2014 Florida Defense Reinvestment Grant Agreement in the amount of $800,000 for military support initiatives, our services. There's a flowchart in the back on the breakdown of how that money will be utilized. The largest portion of it will go toward continuing to support our military consultant and for Shannon and the EDO department working in conjunction with other counties to start and complete a skills inventory of our labor force.
Eighty thousand.
Yeah, 80,000 combined to accomplish those two major objectives. So at this time, I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Salter. Next is Administrative Committee, and we have 15 items this morning. Item number one is discussion of two proposed judicial facility sites, US 90 represented by Colwell Bankers Realtor, and the Avalon Boulevard owned by JDL of Santa Rosa County LLC.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is a map of the two parcels, and again, they're fairly large, and so they're probably not going to project well on the screen, but you've got the Colwell site and the probable cost of that, and also the JDL property, which is on Avalon, and its list of probable costs put together by Hatchman McDonald, our consultant. A third site is one that Commissioner Cole had asked for, and it's in your packet, it's actually the Colwell Banker site, moving to the north, would be the north projection on that, that lowers the cost some a little bit. But if you remember, Colwell Banker had kind of a gradient, price gradient, and this would probably, it reduces the cost of the property about $400,000, according to our estimations on that, and that's the one that Commissioner Cole had asked, and it's been provided to you. Alternatively, as you'll see, that has been sent out Friday, is Colwell Banker had a couple of different options, if you will, the east side of the project, and then the, more or less, the center or the middle of the project, which they've outlined for you. And then again, you've got the range of cost, and then the estimate on the development or the probable cost of developing those two sites.
Discussion from the board.
And we've got Mangram and Mr. Yaley here from the Colwell Banker site on 90. I don't know that I see the...
You want to hear from them before we discuss it?
Mr. Chairman...
Commissioner Salter.
In going over this, obviously, the last several weeks, but over the weekend, I like the Colwell Banker site on Highway 90. I think it's centrally located. I think it has the infrastructure leading up to the site that we would need. Obviously, there's going to be a cost to continue to develop the infrastructure on whichever site we choose. I like the partial that borders Highway 90, even though it's a little bit more expensive. I hate to see us spend this much money and quote-unquote hide the courthouse, so either site on 90 is fine with me, but I would prefer the site that borders Highway 90.
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree also on the site on 90. There were some problems with the other site that I noted on here, but we won't go into that. The only thing I differ on is our location on that. All the maps showed us putting parking on prime frontage, prime commercial frontage, and I just, I feel like this piece of property has a key ingredient in it in two different ways, a very possible connector to, a beginning of a connector to Hamilton Bridge Road, and more so, the balance of the property being able to have growth on it, very nice growth on it, that would raise tax base for Santa Rosa County. And that's the reason I'd like to see a maximum usage on a property, not that I want to hide our judicial center, but it's just, I think now is the time to make some very good choices for our citizens for the next 50 to 80 years, maximize the potential on this piece of property, and also adjoining properties, there's exponential growth available in that particular area, and then the connector. So, I've had Katrina and the computer department very quickly put something together, if we could get it on the screen, I don't know if they burned other copies, but just an idea, I was thinking this morning back when we went through some budget hearings years ago, when Buck Lee came up with his bucks budget, so I guess this is kind of Bob's idea, where, you know, I'd like to just share it with everybody and see what we caught, what we get to, because my true feeling is if this board is not very prudent on this piece of property that we purchased, that we're not going to see the one cent sales tax to build it. And while I'm at it, I'd like to thank all the folks that sent in letters, that contacted me about, you know, the site in East Milton, but, you know, that's kind of off the table unless we get right on these prices, or can't get right on these prices, but I would like to thank them. It's kind of the 11th-hour Hail Mary pitch, so where you've been for the last 11 years is all I could say, when I've been trying to get that horse to water, so. Do we have that available, where we can put it up?
We don't have it.
Okay. No, I thought, you don't have it? Okay. Computer department was supposed to get that up, and Katrina got it on there for me. I'll pass this around for no better way, maybe I could, maybe show it there. That shows it at the back of the property, and you see where it's at. And my idea is that instead of driveway, thank you, instead of a driveway, we put an actual road in there that could eventually connect to the back partial. We put the judicial center on the backside of the property, which, according to the matrix and the breakdown we got from Colwell Bankers, the less expensive the property. We leave all that beautiful frontage on... We leave all that beautiful frontage on Highway 90 for growth. The three parcels, and I'm not sure if it'll break down into three parcels that you see to right over here on the screen. Caldwell Banker would retain those and be able to market those properties, that big green square. They would retain that and be able to market that property. And then the oval is a retaining, retention pond that we would do a shared cost with Caldwell Banker on that retaining pond for our property and those three parcels that come in along that road. We reduce our cost considerably in the shared retention. We, you know, we buy the lesser expensive of the property. And all in all, once you have a road coming into there, we're really not hiding our judicial center. We've just created a new corridor that's much needed in San Rosa County to get to Willard Norris Road. So I want to put it out there for everybody's consideration, for Caldwell's consideration. I think from what we're hearing from Commissioner Salter and myself, that we're leaning strongly towards that piece of property. And I would just like to, you know, maybe give staff this and the ability to work with Caldwell on the Highway 90 piece of property. And this may not be where we go with it, but, you know, I'd like to get input from it and see where we can, see what we could do about rallying the troops to get this idea on the table. And I fully believe that if we show our citizens that we're prudent on this portion of this program and getting this moving forward, that they'll support us on a sales tax to build it. And if we don't, I don't think we'll see the sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, just to remind the public, this decision, we have Commissioner, we have two commissioners that are conflicted out on this and won't be able to vote. Commissioner Lentner.
I no longer have a conflict. The property that was close to mine has been deleted from consideration, so I'm no longer in a conflict position.
I'm sorry, would you say that again? I didn't understand what you said.
I am no longer in a conflict position.
Because the.
Neither one of these properties was the ones that were putting me in a conflict. It was one of the other properties that was.
But the issue isn't resolved. We may not settle on this piece. That's fine. I welcome your vote. I hope you can participate in this, so it's not a three-man deal. But we may not settle on this. You're saying you're not conflicted if we go with 90? Or you're saying we're not conflicted if we look at.
As it pertains to these two properties, I no longer have a conflict. So my, Ms. Jones, you can weigh in on this. I obtained a letter from the Commission on Ethics that wants the, if the property that posed the conflict for me was eliminated from consideration.
It hasn't been.
I thought that was done at our last meeting. We're down to two now.
Right, but one of those is Avalon.
No, no, there were three different properties on Avalon. There was only one that gave me a conflict.
Okay, I appreciate you clearing that up because I didn't realize that you were no longer conflicted. And I know the public hadn't either, because this is the first I've heard of it.
Commissioner Williamson would still be conflicted, but I no longer.
So you're no longer conflicted. Outstanding.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. They were able to, computer department get that up, so presenting questions or discussion. The other thing, too, is the road would more square up with Chantilly Way directly to the south of Highway 90, rather than the little offset. But as I said, Katrina knocked this out in about 30 minutes for me, so thank you for her doing that. But if there's any questions, that's kind of how I outlined it. There's been some consideration that this property needs two, you know, two access points. But there again, if this was a street, a full-blown road rather than just a driveway, I think we'd eliminate that.
Now, I need some clarification. I'm sure the people at home probably too as well. This piece of property we were offered, we had our choice of which part of this property we could buy, all part of it, whichever part of it. And your version of this involves a price reduction. Now, ask the attorney, is can we entertain price reductions on stuff that, I mean, we had however many pieces we started with, and we worked our way through those in an open, fair manner, based on where they were, what they cost us, what, you know, the other aspects. And now we're reducing the price on this one. Can, is that okay? I mean, that seems to me like it's like kind of right here at the tail end undercutting a competitor's price once all the prices are public.
I believe what Commissioner Cole is suggesting is moving to the back of the property where the proposal included cheaper property. That they had a four-tiered pricing system where the most expensive property was on 90, and it became less expensive as you moved off 90. So if I understand Commissioner Cole correctly, he's suggesting moving to the portion of the property that was already priced a little less than that upfront.
Thank you for that. We'd be happy to hear from the two representatives if you would like. I'm sorry, Commissioner Lentner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to give my two cents on the properties. When we started looking at a geographic area for the courthouse, and then we zoned in on this area within a couple of miles of the intersection of Highway 90 and Avalon, the reason was ease of access to, from all areas of the county. The south end of the county, Gulf Breeze Navarre, as well as Pace, Milton, Jay, parts north. I think still the Avalon property provides better access from the south end of the county. Avalon would have secondary access. That property had, it fronts on two roads. So you could come from Pace, you could come the back way, if you will. You wouldn't have to go down 90 and then up on Avalon. So I think from an access standpoint, the property on Avalon gives us a little bit more down the road. The other thing that we need to think about is our timing issue. Are we going to choose a property, contract with the property owner, and then close on that property, and then go out for a sales tax referendum? Or are we going to put an option on the property or come to an agreement on the property and then wait until after the sales tax referendum to actually acquire the property?
We, it's my understanding, and I'm the fellow that made the amendment to the motion. We are absolutely not going to buy anything. What we said, what we told the public we were going to do was to use our best judgment and select the property that we thought filled the need and buy an option on that property. And then the public would have the price of the land, the price of the courthouse, and what it took, either a penny or a half penny for however many years, and then a promised sunset. And that's what we passed. So that, I think that issue has been dealt with, but I'd invite the staff to make sure my memory is correct. I think that we did that in a form of a motion.
And I think we need to get some clarification from the respective property owners. The Caldwell offer that we received, I guess, Friday says that this offer is contingent upon the county choosing the site by the end of February and then closing the sale no later than June 16th of this year. So that would not be an option if that were our case.
That would not, that would knock them out of the consideration. They may or may not want to revisit that, but we clearly, when we agreed to this, when we got through with all the discussion, right at the end, I added that into the amendment, I mean, that amendment into the motion to be sure that's what we were doing. So we have obligated ourselves to buy an option and then tell the county what the land will cost them, what the courthouse will cost them, and whether that's a full penny or a half penny, and a promise of a sunset.
That was my understanding also.
That's my understanding as well.
Those are the only concerns I had at this point.
I too support the Avalon. This, the Highway 90 property is a beautiful piece of property, and the idea of pushing it back toward the back works. It's still on Highway 90. Highway 90 is still, this end of Highway 90 is at C capacity, which means that D and F are failing, so it's strained. It'll require turn lanes, lights, and other things that add to the, add to the tailback. And for that reason and for the general location, I like the Avalon better. But we're not going to have to settle this today. We would like to hear from the representatives and then from anybody in the public. Name and address, please, sir, for the record.
Good morning. I'm Mike Mangram from Caldwell Banker Commercial, United Realtors in Pensacola, Florida. I reside at 2109 Whaley in Pensacola. This, you know, new proposal, something I think that myself and the owner and a proposed developer, someone that has stepped up that wants to be the developer for the entire site, would like to take a hard look at and offer exactly what we did on the option A and B here is to offer, if this is your breakout and that's something you guys want to consider, we need to do a takeoff and get the exact acreage, the plans that the architect had put together. We were able to take that and mirror it onto the survey and come up with a real good estimate. All these will depend on a final survey of where, and it'll be, you know, based on a per square foot or per acre price. But we'd like to get as close as we can on your proposal. And the things that you talked about making the deal better or lowering the price. The purchase price per acre won't get any worse, certainly, than the proposal. What could work in your benefit is the things like the shared retention, perhaps shared cost and other infrastructure that's going to have to go on the property that could ultimately bring your development costs and even your per acre, you know, price down somewhat. So do you have other questions for me pertaining to?
Yes, sir. I do.
Okay, yes, sir.
It may be that that boilerplate just slipped past your staff.
Which boiler?
Well, that we closed by June 30, I guess it was.
Yeah, I didn't know that there was a.
Because we're not, we're not buying property here. We're going to purchase an option.
Okay.
And we're going to put.
Do you think you guys would be able to enter an option agreement by that time?
You need to modify the written record for us.
Okay. So we'll change that on the proposal as well, is what you're asking, if I understand you right, Bob?
That's correct, because we're not buying property. We're buying options as we.
Yeah, I've had a few meetings with staff, and that's really not come up exactly when the date would be that, by which. Oh, I didn't see it.
You're correct. We didn't talk about that.
We don't have a date set, a date certain, but we certainly need to set one because the supervisor of elections has to print ballots, and the overseas ballots have to be mailed. I wish she was here, 45 days?
The deadline for getting our referendum language to Ms. Valane is about the third week in June. I have diaried it for June 1 in the interest of all caution, so we're on top of those timelines.
Staff needs to help us keep that in tight focus. We don't need to overshoot that.
I think that we could probably modify that language on our proposal even before Thursday to, if I can see something that shows what the proposal was or what the, the addendum you're referencing or the amendment you're referencing.
Staff can find that. It was a meeting, it was a few meetings back when we were.
I think that's been since you put out your list of proposals. I think that came up when we were discussing some of the proposals that you got. But I don't think your RFP noted that we were just, that we weren't going to buy property or that we weren't, we were just going to option property.
I've never heard about an option.
I think this board did that, though, in a meeting. And if they didn't, we'll do it right now.
Well, we can.
If we didn't, we'll do it right now, because that is not what the public is expecting us to do. The public is not looking for us to buy something and then come see if they like it. Because they might not want the courthouse, and if they don't want the courthouse, we certainly don't need to inventory any more land and take it off the tax rolls.
We can clarify that with both these property owners regarding their interest in closing after the referendum and clarify that with both of them. I don't know what your plan this morning might be. I don't know if you want to eliminate it down to one pending or contingent upon that or something, but we can certainly clarify that with everybody.
We need to do that. Can we tighten that up by Thursday? We need to, we need to move this night or forward. Mr. Walker, I didn't understand your comment.
Yeah, I think you, obviously, if we're going to make any progress, you're going to have to choose one or the other. And then, and then I think we work out whatever we need to work out.
I would like to see us work toward Thursday for that personally, with the understanding that we're buying options. We're not, we're not going to buy a piece of land and then go see if that's okay with San Rosa County.
Okay. I mean, if.
Not yours, not anybody else's. We're just not going to do that.
Okay. I just know that what we've done so far was, I haven't heard option. We've been basing on a purchase price. So if we need to do an option.
That happened in this, in a meeting, and it may not have, may not have. I understand that the bid process may not have contained that.
Okay.
But it was done here by this board in a previous meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Cole, you got your.
Well, I did, but it didn't, I wanted to question directly to you. I guess you're all right with the option thing?
I'm going to have to get that, you know, approved. I don't own that property, so I'm going to have to double check that. But I imagine that they will, I mean, obviously, we all know this is a business decision for you and for the seller, and the property can't remain off the market indefinitely if it's, I think if a decision is made, and that was the intent of the deadline, is to say, if there's a decision made for this property, you're going to get maximum flexibility on the other things, on the closing date even. Okay, that's, but to know that you're still working on two, and if it keeps getting drawn out, we just want to know that if we're the ones in the contention, I think you can get maximum flexibility from the seller on even a closing date or whether it's an option with a future closing date. But again, that can't stretch out forever because it's off the market at that point. It's not, nobody else could step up and take advantage of it, so that's just where they are. Thanks.
We understand. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had some other comments that didn't, weren't questions directly to him. It's just, you know, I'm concerned with the JDL piece because there's really no ability for future growth around that. The notes were made by Hatchmont McDonald, and where we'd have to go through conditional use, approving residential could be more problematic where the other property has no site constraints. As you can see from the map, you know, backs up the residential, and I don't see a whole lot of area of growth in there other than those residents coming to us wanting to rezone to neighborhood commercial or something to possibly accommodate any growth at that point. The medium breaks availability, where two medium, two full median openings exist on the Highway 90 property versus minimal probability for a medium cut on the Avalon Boulevard. Then there again, in the last page was, would require disturbing a neighborhood. Single-family residential, we'd have to go through the required conditional use approval on that. So again, I think Highway 90, you know, getting back to what Commissioner Lentner said as far as availability to the folks from the south end, you know, it's only maybe another mile. It's going to be a brand-new road and, you know, very well-traffic-controlled intersection from Avalon to 90. I really don't see it being that much of a distance because, you know, the folks coming from Pace would also, you know, if it was on Avalon Boulevard, would have to transact that same intersection. So just some points that I'd like to make for the Highway 90 piece of property.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. Anything else from the board before we listen to, to take public input? Chairman? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I would like to have a little input on this, if I could.
Absolutely.
Since that's where I'm going to be located and my staff will be located. I've walked both, personally walked both properties. I walked all four properties when they were being looked at, but I've walked all four properties. You're talking the traffic on Highway 90. It is what it is. And most of the traffic that's east of Avalon that's going to Pensacola or going, are going on Avalon. That turn lane going on to Avalon is backed up as far as it can be with traffic in the mornings going out Avalon. People in P Ridge and Pace, when they're going to Pensacola, are taking Highway 90 going over the field. That spot between P Ridge and Avalon, the traffic is actually less from what I've been able to observe in the mornings because people are going towards Pensacola and Avalon. The chance for a return on your investment, this is an investment. This is an investment that the county is putting into the community. There's more room for development on the Highway 90 around the building for attorneys, title agencies, restaurants and businesses to service that courthouse. That courthouse has to have service come into it. The spot on Avalon is going, the courthouse is going to fill that, all that 19 acres up. The service that will have to be built on Avalon to provide the service to it will have to be built on those other parcels that we looked at, which will then, they won't be within walking distance. They're going to have to drive across Commerce or go on Avalon to get in there in part to service the courthouse. They won't be within walking distance. We have to look at a hundred year vision. Last month, I left a picture on your desk that showed a young man that had all this electronic equipment that he had on his shoulder, on his desk, and it says, 20 years ago, who would have thought this would all fit in your pocket? Current courthouse we've had for 87 years, this one's going to be here longer. It's got to have room to grow or development around it. There is an option down the road for a corridor to provide another north-south connector besides Glover Lane and East Spencer Field Road between Hamilton Bridge. That will work its way over to Berry Hill. May not happen in our lifetime, but if we plan it properly, it will happen in somebody's future. It's a central location for the communities. I just see the potential and the return on your investment by tax dollars increasing the value of that property. There's that 40 acres that it's in, the back property, what Commissioner Cole is talking about, the average is $25,000 an acre. The property on Avalon is, it's a million dollars for that purchase. In the back end of the property on Highway 90, it's $500,000. It's half price. I can understand why it also could be in the front of the property for the people to see courthouse. It's our community. It represents our county. Our courthouse right now, when people come by and look at it, I really, it's not really a pillar of our representation of our county because it's been there so long. It's a decision y'all are going to have to make. I personally think we get more of a return on our investment from the Highway 90 property. These roads are always going to have traffic and it's always going to get worse. Whatever decision y'all make, I'll be behind you because we need the courthouse. Whatever the commissioners count on, I will back you. But I personally think that the Highway 90 property, if we're going to invest this money into the community to get our return from our investment is where we can get our best return. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Wallace Mahoot 5500, Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I certainly want to thank you for stating that no land would be purchased until the tax is approved. That's good news. And Mr. Spencer made a lot of sense, I think, with what he said. And I certainly have nothing against anybody trying to sell you property on Highway 90. But what I would like to say, I've heard today, Mr. Cole, say that, where were the citizens for the last 11 years? And I ask you right now, they're all behind you right now. Where are you, Mr. Cole?
Well, I'm sitting right here, but matter of fact, I've told those same citizens if they could, if they could bring 175, 100, 150 people in to here, that I would sit back and listen to them hammer East Milton. But you and I and a dozen more emails, can't make that happen. I've always kept that on the table. It's still not a rolled out option. I've made that clear from the very get-go. But, you know, there's not another member of this board that feels the same way I do and there's not 150 people sitting out here feeling the same way that we do. So, you know, it's still an option, but I just think it's, you know, too much or not enough and too late. For 11 years, I've talked that same talk and walked that same walk and it just didn't happen. So, my priority now is just like the clerk of courts priority and I hope all the citizens of this county priority. Let's get a piece of property found and decided on. Let's get a cost decided on. Let's get it on the ballot because I'd like to have seen it on the ballot two years ago. Every day we waste is another day we're spending money uselessly on an outdated, you know, courthouse. You know, putting money into mobile portable buildings, putting money into security systems, putting money where, you know, it's not going to have a benefit in the future. Let's get this thing done once and for all. And if we could pass this week as far as a piece of property and then in November pass a sales tax and get this thing built, I won't talk about it anymore. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And something else I wanted to mention was now we're talking about moving, pushing the courthouse back and creating another road, you know, to go further back. That sounds like a lot of additional costs to me. And also apparently you're still going to have a holding pond where, on property where it's a closed basin. And I thought Mr. Melvin's idea about pumps to alleviate that instead of having a holding pond. I thought that was a good idea. Also at a previous meeting, I remember Mr. Salter saying, well, there's still plenty of time for currency improvements on Highway 90 if we're going to put it on Highway 90. Well, then to me, there's also time for concurrency improvements in East Milton. You have an offer of free property in East Milton with everything that you need, gas, water, electric, somebody who's willing to work with you if you want more property in that location. You have approved a development on Persimmon Hollow Road that's going to increase that traffic greatly when it's filled up. So, there's going to be, there's going to be a need for concurrency improvement there anyway. And I would also say that the I-10 Industrial Park, the Pullum property, is to me still a good location. You have I-10. I-10 can be accessed by, you know, a number of different ways. If you put in the 87 bypass, people from J can take the 87 bypass and come to East Milton. So, I would, I would think that people want you to not spend more money on land when you have an offer of free land and when you own $3 million worth of property in East Milton. And I just have one last question. When you say you're, you're going to purchase an option to buy this property, is that going to cost you anything for them to hold it?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Would you like me to respond?
Please.
I'd like to clarify with the commission that I'm not entirely certain we're looking at buying an option. I had envisioned that we would enter into a contract that would close after the referendum and be contingent upon a successful outcome of the referendum. And the reason I say that is I think that our use of the word offer this morning might have drawn some confusion on, from Mr. Mangram. I think if we'd maybe not used that word, he might have been able to answer a little more directly. But I expect that we would enter into a contract that'll just close later on in the year.
And no cost?
And either way, that would service, that would fulfill our need.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Salter.
I appreciate Wallace's commitment and desire for East... Every week I read in the paper, I hear people talking about the horrible traffic conditions of Highway 90 trying to get in and out of Milton, especially with the Marcus Basin Bridge being replaced. That's probably two, three years away. Then eventually you're going to be looking at replacing the Blackwater Bridge. Lord knows how long that'll take. The courthouse might be expired by the time all those road projects are done. So, that's my reason once again is the lack of infrastructure in East Milton. Thank you.
Thank you, and just to add my two cents worth. My only objection to the Highway 90 property is the traffic. There's nothing in the pipeline that's going to improve the capacity of 90 in the foreseeable future. And it's operating at its limit right now. If it slips to a D or an F, by definition, it's in failure. In other words, it's overloaded. It's at peak capacity right now. We've got two good pieces of property and on those two good pieces of property, one piece of property offers a choice of two sites. We need to try to settle this if we can by Thursday. But better, better right than quick. But if I, my only hang up with 90 is concurrency. If there was some way that Department of Transportation could step up. But you've got to have turn lanes. You're going to have to have those, at least two of those big boom stoplights. And we all know that delays are additive. If you're at the back of a 15 car line of traffic, it's probably about a minute before you're going to move. So, that's my problem with it and hopefully we can get this all cleared up. Would you like to add something to the discussion? Name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Andrea McDermott, 8093, Sleepy Bay Boulevard. I appreciate all the work y'all have put into this. I agree that the property needs to have somewhere where we can expand in the future as Mr. Spencer pointed out. We don't want to get into this problem that we have now where you can't expand due to the buildings building around it. I still have a concern with only having one roadway. I mean, you're modifying and building this property. I don't think you should limit yourself to one way in or out, whether you buy the front piece or the back piece. We need a second way. I've been in courthouse a few times where I've left and had to sit and wait a little bit just to make sure that the person that I was in court against wasn't sitting out there to take a little revenge on me. But, you know, we need to have a second way so that that way someone doesn't get bottlenecked in while waiting to get out of the courthouse. I like Mr. Melvin's idea of having a pumping system instead of retention ponds. I'm not a fan of retention ponds unless they're a useful way to distribute the irrigation or something to that effect. So, hopefully, you know, when you're making these considerations, I do like, the Avalon access seems better, but Mr. Spencer made some good points also on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Could we put the one that we just, you did for me up there, please? Roger could do that? She's, I guess she's indicating you can put that, the one I had them draw this morning up? Okay. Andrea, to get back to yours, there would be a, possibly a potential of running one down that yellow line, another entrance, but then also just going over and tying maybe a entrance for just the judiciary, the judges and the sheriff through the existing road there because there is some vacant parcels there. But that could all be worked out, I think, once we hammer down the initial location. And again, this, you know, we, where it shows just one access off of our parking lot to the road, there could be two accesses there and in and out. Because like you say, my thoughts are that needs to be a road of...
Mr. Whitfield, how wide does a road need to be for a two lane road with, you know, a comfortable two lane road?
Typically in subdivisions, it's 24 feet. Roger, what would it be on a commercial? 24?
I'm sorry.
I think he's talking about right of way.
A right of way?
Yeah, right of way. Because this would, he, I think what he, he would envision is that this would be the connector. I'm assuming just that the road going there ultimately would proceed north to the, across Davis-Whitfield Memorial Bridge there at Pond Creek and tie into...
60 feet right of way.
60 foot, okay. And Codwell needs to know that, so while you're working this out.
I'm just saying, that would be what you would require for the road.
Yeah, and so you would have, you know, a new road basically, not a driveway, but a new road.
Right, and that would be nice. Like I said, don't want to have to sit and wait out our time in the courthouse. But another thing that can be do, be done to help maybe alleviate because you are going to be adding lights to 98 is maybe timing the lights so they're synchronized, allow traffic flow to flow better. It may not reduce the number of cars or the space, but it would allow them to flow a little better.
Thank you. We've got that, this goes inside, that's in the pipeline for all of our major arteries now, trying to get that synchronized and FDOT is going with a system. I don't know when it's going to be here, but it's on its way.
I do want to just mention one thing is on, that, 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 that cost of that bridge, I mean, that's one of the reasons, I mean, it's, it's a huge cost. It's millions of dollars. I mean, I kind of, to do anything based on that, I think is going to be, I mean, it's...
You're speaking about?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Just a minute. What are you speaking about, the bridge? You talking about the...
If you're talking about a north, a northern connector
Oh, okay.
Between US 90 and Hamilton Bridge Road.
Mr. Cole?
If I might, and I understand there is a cost there because not, Pond Creek's just not a creek. It's a floodplain area, so there is a considerable cost there. But if, if this section of the road, as far as just buying the property, is at no cost to San Rosa County, I've already been indicated from the owner of the next 50 acres that he would be willing to deed the right of way at no cost. Then on the other, on the north side of Pond Creek, there was consideration years ago that that owner would also deed the property. So, if, if all the future residents and citizens of San Rosa County are concerned with would be just the cost of building the road and building a bridge and you don't have millions of dollars in buying right of way or relocating businesses or homes, I think there again, when we're looking at 50, 60, 100 years down the road, we're planting those seeds. It's just like, why do I want to go out and plant a tree today? I'm certainly not going to hang a swing in it. I'm not going to see any shade from it. But if we don't plant those trees today, our children and our grandchildren and their children, they won't have any trees. So, I think this is part of planting that, planting that tree.
Okay. All right, well, I will move this to Thursday without objection, but we need to, we need to try to nail this down Thursday to a final selection. So, get your inputs in to your commissioners. This is a tough one. There's two sites with three good, three good prospects, a lot to be said for all of them. My personal concern at this point still remains concurrency, which is another word for saying capacity on Highway 90. That's my only problem with the 90 property, but that's a major concern in my mind. So, we will move this without objection to Thursday. Here none, it passes. Item number two is discussion of the contract with Davis South Barnett and Patrick Advertising for TDC Marketing Services. Details in the backup discussion. Here none, I moved this to Thursday without objection. Here none, it passes. Item number three is discussion including the Tourist Development Council, TDC staff into county organizational structure. Again, there's backup, details in the backup, questions, comments. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Commissioner Salter?
I think it all kind of lights on here.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lynch? Just before we make any decisions on this, I'd like to see the financial impact of the county. We don't have any hard numbers about the additional cost of moving...
Sure, absolutely.
...salaried positions underneath the county. I'm sure it's going to go up. We need to know how much.
We'll put that in writing. It's budget neutral. Their salaries are paid by the, by the same dollars that'll pay them if we put them under our organizational structure. Ms. Wilks is paid by the TDC itself, by TDC dollars, as are the two helpers. And so we would just move...
And so, we would just move her under the county and she would still be paid with TDC dollars. She would just have a county. Under the old structure, the Santa Rosa County Tourism Bureau was a not-for-profit corporation established by this board back in the early 90s. And it continued that way until 2009 when that corporation failed to update its charter. And so, it went into default, which the TD, there is no corporate structure there. They have no ability to hire, you know, as far as they're working with tax dollars. Those dollars are now flowing through the county's accounting system. We're audited for the very first time ever last audit cycle. This would bring her into our, put her in economic development, which is the logical place for it. Give her someone that, that she reports to and, and some structures as opposed to the situation we have now. But it would be budget neutral. We would use TDC dollars, bed tax dollars, to pay the salaries like we're doing right now. There would be an addition of the FRS. There would be addition for future employees for insurance. But like, I'm a retired military. I cost the county about, I don't know, probably $12,000 a year or less than the other commissioners because I don't need any of the insurance benefits the county offers because I'm, I'm retired military. The two helpers are military spouses and Kate is insured.
My only point is we need to see what those numbers are, what the impact is financially.
Sure. Well, we, yeah, we will. And we'll, we'll, we'll put that into the backup, but the impact is, is budget neutral.
To the county, but not, not necessarily to the TDC.
Well, absolutely to the TDC. Where's the difference?
The, the FRS payments and addition?
Well, no, I'm sorry. The F, I, I, I prefaced my remarks by saying other than the FRS.
Okay.
Yeah, the FRS would be, not be out of theirs, it'd be out of us.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
I'm, I'm going to be opposed to this. Read several things. And, and one of the comments in our backup is in case of poor or incompatible hire, hiring them or in the future. Secondly, by setting up positions outside of county employment, FRS contribution, health insurance payments by the county would be avoided and thereby minimize administrative costs. Maximize TDC revenue for marketing and promotions. I don't see how that has changed. Then to look at it, you know, like what we did with economic development, economic development's paid for by electric franchise fees, that this board has the ability to move that up and down or change that. Whereas bed taxes are vested by the state statute. It can't be used for anything else. And then finally, the TDC is a singular focus unlike economic development, which we would have a say-so in which direction we want to move economic development. Where TDC is focused on building our tourist industry. We've been six years in a hiring freeze, no raises to our employees until this past fall. We're asking our employees to do more with less, which they have done, and thank our employees for that. And finally, we're Republicans. We're supposed to be looking at less government for our people, not more government. And I see this as just another tier of government. If you read the contract from the, just the previous item in the Marketing Agreement Service, everything they do comes back to this board for final approval, for final approval. So, I, I just don't see why we would want to bring them in-house, add to our bottom, add to the cost of, to the citizens and, and add another layer of government to what we're supposed to be trying to reduce. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Salter.
Those are some of the same concerns I have. I'm not sure if I'm for it or against it yet. But I think by trying to do something by Thursday is too quick. I'd like to see what the organizational structure would look like. Who would Kate and the TDC staff report to? If it's going to be Shannon, now that's going to take Shannon away from a portion of doing more economic development. Does that mean then we need another economic development person to take in that department? I think there's just a lot of questions that I would like to see answered as far as organizational structure. Who's going to be in charge, those kind of things, and then the overall cost.
And we certainly put those together. The situation that drove this is that the corporation that used to be the TDC is now nonexistent. And Kate works for an advisory group of appointed citizens. And is paid by TDC dollars, doesn't have anybody that is her specific specified boss, one way or the other. Because that corporate structure is gone, there's, you know, there, if FEIN number is gone, we, we handle payroll through a convoluted agreement with the Navarre Chamber and Landrum Staffing. So, it's, there's, there's details there that, that Lynn support this. But we certainly need to get that all in the backup so that we can make an intelligent decision.
Mr. Chairman, what, and that's what my last paragraph said. If you, if, if there's, if there's the interest in the board in pursuing this, I think you're exactly right. I mean, I think we, the, we need to look at, at, at if, if under economic development's the proper, proper place for the concerns that Mr. Salter had. Also, we're going to, how is the TDC going to fit in, in that, how the lines of authority going to be? I mean, we need to figure out how it's going to fit in the, the organizational structure. And then not just for now, but, but forever, who's going to be responsible for, for what? And, and, and this is just to, if there is the interest for us to bring something back, I certainly can't have it done by, by Thursday, but, but to try to look at what the, at least some of the options are in that.
Well, would you direct staff to work on this? And will we get it, when it's ready for primetime, bring it back and we answer the questions in the...
I'll direct the county administrator, but that's exactly what we'll do.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from the board?
I'm him.
Anything from the public? I recommend that we take no action on this and hold this as a discussion. I'm sorry? Okay, sir. All right. And this is discussion item and no action is required. Item number four is a discussion of installation of saltwater well on Navarre Beach to support the Sea Turtle Conservation Center.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is, is the, an email thread between you and, and, and Ms. Holmes and I regarding, I believe it's the saltwater well on, on Navarre Beach that would, would service the Sea Turtle program in that regard. Ms. Holmes couldn't be here. Mr. Henderson, with Henderson Engineering, it was, was actually going, is the, I believe, the engineer in charge. And, and I think you see what the requirements are. The only thing would be is there, is there a price, what would be the, the total price of the, the project? That's just not included in the, in the email. Would be the only thing. And she couldn't be here. I believe her mother's ill.
There hasn't been any pricing yet. We're still in the investigation stages. Well, the circumstances, I'm working on a aquaculture research facility over in Okaloosa County. And we're doing some of the similar things and the DEP has referred Mrs. Holmes to me. And right now, we need to do some more, some borings to determine the salinity and the freshwater. Typically, we have a freshwater lens that goes to about 30 feet deep. And then we have a transition brackish water that goes down to about 80 feet. And then we have saltwater to about 130 feet. That's where a clay layer begins. And there's about 300 feet of clay and the Florida aquifer is below that. So, we looked at some options, pulling the water out of the sound. We have issues with that because, you know, there's pollution issues, salinity levels, there's red tide issues. We had a red tide over in Chautauqua Bay in like 2007, I believe, and it lasted for about four months. And that's toxic to the turtles, so we, we can't use that water.
Mr. Henderson, I think what we would, I think that we would need would just be maybe if, if, if you would get with Ms. Jones and I, and I think just if you've got some kind of proposal on, on, on maybe what your services would cost and where we would go.
I'm not sure if the county would be paying for my services or if it's the, the Sea Turtles, the Conservation Center. I believe they're the ones.
Anyway, the...
We're, we're asking for approval for the locations, I believe, right now.
Sir, one, one just administrative item. We need your name and address for the record.
I'm John Henderson. My address is 980 MacBayou Road in Santa Rosa Beach.
Okay, sir. And the other, the other thing, I understand that the saltwater well, I understand the need for the saltwater well. We can't give you permission. I don't know who you look to for permission to drill wells. But what are you asking us to do to approve what, I'm sorry?
Well, it's all on the county property. So, I believe we're asking for permission for the locations of the wells.
You're asking us if it's okay, if you ask the state if it's okay, if you drill, okay?
Yeah. And we need them kind of separate because we have a supply well and an injection well. And so, we need a little bit of distance because we're injecting back on top of the clay layer in the saltwater, the same saltwater we're pulling out for our supply. So, we don't want to contaminate our supplies. So, we need a little bit of separation. That's why we have one out by the Gulf. And there's no development between there. We can do a directional bore to get to it. So, it, it looked like a pretty good location.
Those details just weren't readily available. So, you're asking us if it's okay if you ask the state to drill a hole? All right. I think that's pretty, pretty straightforward.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. My only question to it is, do we know now what the marine science station is using for their saltwater?
No, I sure don't.
And I'd be in agreement with this, but I think the, I think the well would be, if necessary, I wouldn't see why they wouldn't also need saltwater if this could be used for both, both facilities.
Yeah. I mean, that, a joint well would, it'd save money and save property. So, yeah, that would...
Just like to explore that as we move forward.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Salter.
Not so much today, but at some point in time, I want to hear from the Navarre Beach Administrator Engineer on the potential impact this might have on the beach. I want to hear our engineering side of it. Is it going to be good, bad? I don't know.
You're talking about two wells or you're talking about the whole project, sir? Okay.
The supply well will have to be permitted through the Water Management District. And the injection well will have to be permitted through the DEP. So, there's, there's state permitting requirements.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions or inputs? I recommend we move this Thursday without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number five is discussion of the Florida Department of Transportation US 98 Beautification Project Phase Two. Information's in your backup. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, and just to, to point is, is outlined in Ms. Harris's email. This, this was a grant that we had applied for through the state of Florida. It was contingent upon to, to install some, some landscape material on, on the medians in US 98. It was contingent upon the United Peninsula Association being able to be responsible for the ongoing maintenance cost. They've not been able to do that to this point, is my understanding. So, I mean, we're, we just kind of need to, to do something with the grant.
I'm not a grant expert. I understand that the bids exceeded the available grant money by considerable chunks.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Thank you. The, the bid did come in a little bit over the, the grant amount. That's not the biggest concern. I think the biggest concern is the ongoing maintenance moving forward. They were expecting a commitment that they have not received for, or to assist with the, the $8,000 to $12,000 per year that's needed to maintain this median beautification project. We could, we could probably work with them on the, the $14,000 deficit in the grant award. We could either modify the, the scope of the project somewhat, maybe to, to reduce that. Or I, I could even fund it out of District Five reserves. But the, the problem is the ongoing maintenance. I don't know when our drop dead date is on the grant. Sheila, do you? Do you mind coming up?
The expiration date for the grant is at the end of this month. FDOT is willing to entertain an extension provided we've got the, the maintenance issue worked out.
We, we do have to have the maintenance issue worked out, though?
Yeah, I think it's something, you know, probably should be worked out fairly quickly. FDOT is aware of the issues and, you know, are willing to work with us on that. But they do need, you know, assurances that the maintenance, you know, won't be an issue.
Just one moment, please, ma'am. I'm confused by the, by the, by the verbiage here. The backup said bids were open on December the 17th, 2013, and a low bid was an amount of $74,337, which exceeded available grant in the amount of $60,000. Now, was the grant $60,000 or was the overbid $60,000?
The grant was $60,000.
The grant was $60,000. Okay. That, that makes a big difference. And as to the extent that this thing can come on down through District Four, I think between District Four and District Five, we can assist in that because it's a great benefit to both.
That's, that's the concern that I see, you know? They've been successful with their first median beauti, uh, median beautification project there in front of Walmart and Lowe's in, in, in the Tiger Point area. It turned out really nice. It, it looks great. I think it adds a lot to, to the area. This is their second project. They were successful in the design, successful in getting the grant with the help of Sheila. If this doesn't succeed, I, I really doubt what kind of traction they're going to be able to get moving forward, going down towards Navarre. So, I would like to hold off as long as possible before we pull the plug on this, so to speak, and see if there's some way that, that UPA can, can garner a little bit more support down there for the, the ongoing maintenance. I would be willing to, to, to take care of the deficit out of District Five funds for the, the overbid on the, the installation of the project. But we just need some assistance on the maintenance. And I looked into having, to, to seeing if TDC funds would be available for beautification. But our county attorney informed me that that was not permissible under the statute. So, it's $8,000 to $12,000 per year for this segment. I'll, I'll be in discussions with UPA over the next two weeks and see if there's anything that we can do to shore up the, the maintenance.
What would you like for us to do with this item right now?
Let's bring it back in two weeks.
Okay. We'll take this as discussion, no further action, and when we see it again, we will deal with it.
And I'll, I'll talk with UPA and make sure that they understand that now's the time to try to get those businesses on board. And maybe, maybe those businesses will take note knowing that we have a two week window to work with. And after that two weeks is up, if we don't have a commitment on the maintenance, then the project's going to go away. And that's $60,000 of state money that would be coming in to beautify our Senate corridor. And again, I think the, the long-term implications are if this fails, it's going to make it more and more difficult in the future to keep working these projects down the highway.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Through the chair to Commissioner Lynch. This has to be funds that are available to more or less contract this workout. It can't be like a voluntary basis, like a business adopts a certain section of it?
No, the way, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sheila, but DOT does not allow the sponsorship signs on Highway 98 for these types of projects. So, we can't have a, this segment maintained by Lowe's or Walmart or whatever. So, that's not an option. The, the last project, you know, they had commitments from businesses in the area. And then UPA made a commitment as well to get that project out of the ground. And, and it's up and running and, and it looks great. So, again, it's going to require, it's, it's going to require a partnership with the, the private sector down there. And if the businesses that are, that would benefit by this median project will get on board, then we can move forward.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll hold this until the staff brings it back and then we'll take it up again. So, no action required today. We move on to item number six. Item number six is discussion of the interlocal agreement with the city of Milton for use of county-owned property for affluent disposal. Commissioner, Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet, is, is that interlocal agreement? I believe this is something that we've discussed the last number of weeks. And this, this just allows them to, to, to use this parcel that's on the night, uh, we have, we have actually purchased with some of the Navy and DIG funds. with some of the Navy and, and DIG funds. This will allow them to deal with affluent disposal, which will enable us to help develop that park in the long run. So we were able, we were able to solve this need and the, the need for the development of the taxiway and some of that additional fill material that was going to be needed over the, over the life of the project of the Whiting Aviation.
Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we're all for this. When I was reading it over the weekend, there were some questions that I hadn't asked myself, so I'll do it today. Can we legally do this? Can we actually convey, transfer this property acknowledging that we used defense grant dollars to, to purchase the property?
I don't know of any prohibition to allowing the city of Milton to use it for affluent disposal.
I know at one time you had to retain ownership of the property for X amount of time. So I just want to make sure we can legally do it before we do it.
We are retaining ownership of the property, yeah?
Uh, we do have conservation easement. I don't know just a piece of property. Randy Roy's saying yes. Everybody who's in place now, I know we're going to have good intentions of doing what's right, but twenty years from now, I want to make sure that property is still protected with the conservation easements. Also, in reading this, other than getting some of the dirt back that we already own, are there any commitments from the city of Milton on what they will provide to the Whiting Aviation Park as far as future capacity on the sewer line? Are a reduced cost if we're going to be giving them one hundred and thirteen acres?
No, sir.
I made the assumption, pardon me for interjecting myself, but I made the assumption when this came up that that was all part and parcel of the deal. And I appreciate you bringing that up because if it's not, we need to make sure it is.
I'd like to see some language in here. What would the county get in return for deeding one hundred and thirteen acres to the city of Milton? We all for it. But I just want to make sure when we're not here anymore, there's something in writing that, what the county will get in the way of capacity, reduce costs, those kind of things.
Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was Zach, you hit it nail right on the head because I know with the building of Geo Prison and different things like that, we had to use some of that capacity we have in economic development. So if we're going to provide this property, I'd, I'd like to see some capacity numbers that, that we get for economic development.
We can certainly have that discussion. I just will reiterate that we aren't deeding the property and we will retain ownership of it. But we can absolutely talk about that.
We'll, the attorney will get all these details reduced to writing and all of our interests will be tightened up. But those, that's good catch. Thank you, Commissioner Salter. All right. I will. I'm sorry. Absolutely. We'll move that to Thursday without objection and hearing none, it passes. And we'll take a break for ten minutes now. Please back, be back in here at forty-two after the hour. If you'll take your seats, please. We're on the action item number seven, Administrative Committee, Discussion of the Development of Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Application for Installation of Water Lines and Fire Hydrants by Midway Water System in Several Neighborhoods is Recommended by the Citizens Advisory Task Force.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is, is, is Ms. Harris's email and, and the other items included in that that outlines the process that we've gone through as we, as we're, we're, we're doing, as we're, as we're going through the application development process with CDBG. And we'd solicited input from, from the public, you know, had the public hearing and from the board and from the utilities regarding potential CDBG projects. We actually received three from the city, one from the city of Milton, which was a, a more, more sewer extension in the Baghdad area. The Pace Water System had proposed a Legend, Legend Crete sewer project in Pace. And then the Midway Water offered the, the water line and fire protection upgrade for the Evergreen Shores, Barbarosa Estates and, and New Hope area. And the CATV, the Citizens Advisory Task Force, had, had reviewed these projects and they are recommending the Midway project. You'll see the breakout form on that. It actually has the most beneficiaries in it, really, and affects three separate areas. And, and we think that it will score pretty well in the, the statewide competition, if you will, because these are competitive grants. I would note that this would be the first time that we've submitted an application for the sewer line, water line, water line and fire protection upgrades. Most of these lines were put in probably in the, in the seventies, late sixties, early seventies, and are undersized for fire protection and, and just for the amount of capacity that's now on them. So this, this will be the first and, but this is the recommendation for proceeding with that project. And then there'll be, the, 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 the next steps is the board would, would approve the applicant, application development of this. And it'll come back for formal approval and at the, at the final public hearing, I believe in about a month.
So we need to move this to Thursday and then we'll, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Walker. I'm pleasantly surprised to see that we can finally get something done with our, our water lines and fire hydrants. I've, I've worked on that for years with Emergency Services and Mr. Gomillion and a lot of our citizens out there that have asked that something like this be done because it lowers their insurance rates and protects their homes better. So has this ever been available in the past or is this something new?
No, the, I mean, CDBG grants have been around for a number of years.
But I meant this, this portion of it. Is it's the water lines and fire hydrants something new or?
It is, but I don't know that, no, it's not anything new. It's typically the utilities a more, it's more expensive to put in, in sewer. They, they, and they tend to be the items that are omitted in low, moderate income areas. In other words, you're, you're, you have to have the low, moderate income targets, target areas to obtain these funds in the competitive arena that it is. So the wastewater upgrade and, and septic tank abatement has been more competitive. Actually, Midway Water, since they don't have wastewater, is, is, they put together a very competitive grant using the three areas. And if you'll note, I believe they, they overmatch this project with their own funds. So it's a pretty extensive project, but it's always been available. It's typically the utilities are focused more on the wastewater.
But say like a utility like East Milton that doesn't have wastewater, could, could look at these?
Absolutely. And, 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 and we could work up some kind of, if they, if they got an area where they need their, their water lines upgraded in, in, in low, moderate income.
Okay, great. Good, good, good information. Thank you.
Okay. We will move this item number seven forward to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item number eight is discussion of Navar Beach Sea Turtle Center Amazing Race for Survival, which will be Saturday, April the fifth, two thousand and fourteen, on Navar Beach. Details in the backup, pretty straightforward. No discussion. I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item number nine is discussion of the third annual Surf Warriors event on Navar Beach for Saturday, May the third, two thousand and fourteen, benefiting the Wounded Warriors Project, sponsored by the Florida Surf Association, another outstanding project. I'll move this forward to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item number ten is discussion of the annual Marine Sanctuary Run for the Reef 5K Race on Navar Beach, Saturday, October the eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, sponsored by the Navar Chamber Foundation. I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item number eleven is discussion of the Second Annual Autistic Odyssey Sea Event on Navar Beach, Saturday, April the twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, hosted by the Navar Beach Marine Science Station. Move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item number twelve is discussion of Color Splash Beach Bash 5K Run on Navar Beach, Saturday, April the nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, sponsored by the Navar High School Student Government Association. And I'll move that to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item number thirteen is discussion of scheduling Tuesday, April the tenth, two thousand and fourteen, regular meeting in the Tiger Point Community Center. Commissioner Lynch, are you guys going to be ready with everything we need to do that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. That's the, the reason we scheduled it on the, the Thursday, so we'd have that, that week to set up. We could set it up Wednesday rather than trying to have a Monday meeting down there and set up over the weekend. So that should work out and the community center should be ready to go.
Outstanding. All right. Well, I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. We look forward to that. Item number fourteen is discussion of the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen budget calendar events. I know our young CPA has been laboring on this and it's something I've built a few times myself. Look forward to it. I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
The only item missing in the backup was the calendar events. It's, it'll be, we'll make sure that we get that. But we've, we've, we've looked at it all. It'll be, we'll make sure that we get that, but we've looked at it all in your calendar so you can play.
These things are just a bit more than, I mean, you have to weave in and out of leap year and watch the Florida statutes. There's a lot to it that sounds pretty straightforward, but it certainly is not. We'll move that to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item number 15 is information only. Public hearing items scheduled for 9:30 a.m., Thursday, the 13th, 2014, is an amendment to ordinance 2012 dash one to include an exemption for tangible personal property to economic development incentives ordinance for qualified businesses. So just be on notice that we will be taking that up February 13th. And that concludes the Administrative Committee and we're ready for the engineer's report. Mr. Blalock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is a discussion of the request for qualifications, consultant qualifications and their ranking for the Holly by the Sea Master Drainage Plan, and it's included there in Attachment A. Santa Rosa County received six RFQs from six firms. You see the ranking there and this is, this project of such a magnitude, it would be our recommendation that the board interview and we would need direction on how far down the list you'd like. We have two firms ranked equally at the top and then the second and third ranks were very close as well. So if you wanted to do three or four or even all of them, it'd be, we just need direction.
Commissioner Cole.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like Engineering Department to narrow this down to three for, be my suggestion.
Could we do four, Mr. Chairman? Would that, I think that, as he noted, I believe the third and the fourth were pretty close. Was that what you were saying, Ron?
Well, I was saying that we had two right there at the top, the, at 98. We had one at 96 and then the others spread out about two apart going down.
Bring us the top four. Does any, do commissioners have any problem with looking at the top, having them bring us the top four?
And gentlemen, if you look on the bottom right-hand side of that ranking form, there are, there they are in order of appearance. You just go through and cut it off after the third one, number three.
Commissioner Lynch.
That would be fine. We have, we have two ranked at number one, then a second and a three. So you're talking, it would be, we will interview Basketville Donovan, DRMP, Fabre Engineering and Hatchmont McDonald. And that's based on the ranking developed by our Engineering Department.
So you're saying take the top three, the 98, the 98 and the 96?
No, it would be the top four. There are actually two number ones.
I'm sorry, you're absolutely correct. I was, I was lumping them together. Our brain is on standby this morning.
A little difficult to read there.
Yeah, that would give us, that will do what we need to do right there. Yeah.
I'll move that without objection to Thursday.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is the discussion of the engineer's proposal for Ken Horn and associate for the Settlers Connolly Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Project. We have that scope of work and the proposed fee. We've reviewed it with our grants coordinator and we're making a recommendation to move this to Thursday with the contract approval.
Okay, I'll move that Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three and four are the discussion for the request for qualifications for consultants ranking with our Jeff H. Road Industrial Site Certification Process. The Engineering Department and Economic Development Office with Shannon have gone through those requests for qualifications. We had two firms on each of them that are tied at the top and our recommendation would be split the two projects and give the two top firms one of them each. That way we get the best of both worlds. We'll have the expertise out of the one firm and then compare it against the other. And as we go through the submittal with 60, 90% plans, then we can get the best of two firms versus just the one. And that would be our recommendation. It'd be up to the board which firm you'd like to select for each.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. I like the suggestion we have from our Engineering Department, Mr. Blalock. I would, you'd only have to have us decide which firm gets which contract?
We would Thursday recommend which contract for each one.
I'd like to, I'd like to move the suggestion by the county engineer without objection for a final decision on who gets what on Thursday. Okay? Without objection.
And hearing none, it passes. So that would be item three and four. So item five is discussion of East Milton Water System, request to share a half, the cost share, one half mile of water line for the airport hangar fire protection at a cost of $12,561.79. Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Blalock, go ahead.
Yes, the East Milton Water System approached the Engineering Department for Santa Rosa County's participation in a water main upgrade project. They're looking at extending an existing six-inch water main that's at the southern portion of North Airport Road. There's a little red dot right by the arrow there. That's where the six-inch water main ends. The rest of the water going up through there is three and four and two-inch waters, water distribution mains. And they have asked us to participate in the cost of the materials to lay six-inch from its existing six-inch point to the end of our hangars. We would recommend that and that would include six-inch water main and construction of two additional fire hydrants on North Airport Road.
I'd like to interrupt that with a question. I ask you to recall our discussions about site certifications, et cetera, when we first ventured into that. And amongst the things you have to do is to demonstrate a dedicated surplus of water. Now this does, has this been taken into account for the fire protection area? We have a certain amount of water available to go to that industrial site and this six-inch water line is a good idea. I'm just asking, have we, have we considered the industrial park's water requirements prior to making this request? Because if we can only have one, I want the industrial park.
Right, this is, this is just North Airport Road. This is their internal improvement project and they're, they're going to approach this and have to do it incrementally if we don't participate at this point, so.
Not my question.
Yes, but the answer.
My question was the total gallons of water available for the industrial park.
Yeah, yes, we will review the capacity by Thursday and have you a definitive answer.
If you have us that capacity review by Thursday, we'll be able to make a decision.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Through the chair, Mr. Blalock, I read this and I didn't understand what our cost was. Do we, would it be half of the 12.5 or our half is 12.5?
It would be a half a mile at 12, 561.79.
Okay, well, we're going to cost share.
The cost share is they're going to do all of the engineering permitting, construction, labor and equipment to install it. We're just buying the materials.
Okay, which is 12.5?
Yes, sir.
Okay, right. That was my question. I didn't know if that was.
That's the cost share. They were going to do the installation, labor, equipment permitting.
Just, yeah, just be sure we have a capacity number so that we are all on one page here because if we don't siphon off capacity that we need for our sites that we've been working so hard to get certified for this project.
Right.
Okay, we'll move that to Thursday without objection and this will all hinge on the capacity report you bring us.
Item number six would be a discussion of the final plan for Pace Mill Creek Phase Two. This is a private 27-lot subdivision located in Working District One. You've seen this a number of times and they are working to get approval on Thursday. And so if they make the cut, we'll have them on the agenda for Thursday's action.
So we'll move this to Thursday, subject to those.
That's correct.
All right, I'll move that Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Next on the agenda is Public Services. Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of approval for staff to proceed with the abatement bid process for the following properties. 3998 Adams Road in Milton, 4425 Alanthus Street in Milton, 4537 Church Street in Milton, 5303 Pecos Pass in Gulf Breeze and 5300 Yancey Drive in Pace. Unless there are any questions, I'll move these to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of combining the Building, Mechanical and Plumbing Board of Adjustments and Appeals. There's a memo in your backup material, Mr. Gomillion. Do you want to add anything to the discussion?
I can answer any questions. Again, we're just, I think the memo is probably self-explanatory. We just see it as a way to be more efficient and take care of the business that needs to be taken care of.
And we had done this a couple of years ago with the zoning and variance boards, so trying to streamline our various committees. Unless there are any questions, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Not really a question, just a comment. I thought it'd take this time to mention. William J. Blackman has been on this board of adjustments for, I've been on the board 11 years and he was on there either 20 or 25 years when I took this office. So he's well over 30 years and I'd just like to thank him for all his dedication to this. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we would bring you back when you, when we, when the staff comes back with this as far as, we'll work with county attorney, the ordinance would have to be amended and of course we'll bring back some recommendations about how to constitute the new board. And I would think within that we would provide you with those names of those that might be interested in retiring off of these boards. There are several that have been there a long time that have expressed an interest and it's time to step down and we would bring recommendations about, you know, acknowledging those, their service.
Item number three is discussion of the request from Dr. Steve Herring to amend the land development code to allow Navar Beach High Density Zoning District to be located outside of the commercial core area. This request was continued from the January 6th, 2014 commission meeting. And I'll open this up for discussion. Any commissioners have any questions? Any input from the public on this? I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Salt.
Just a little discussion. I'm not sure what we would vote on on Thursday. I keep going back and reflecting on the Navar Beach master plan and I would think if we're going to change that, we would have to go through some type of public hearing process.
How the, Mr. Chairman, if I may, is, is, how the wording, I would envision the wording on Thursday would just be to kind of direct staff to send this, it's got to go exactly right. This has got to go through the rezoning change process. So that would be public hearings with the local planning board, then coming back before this board for ultimate approval at one of your, a future rezoning meeting. So it's got to go through the process set up by the state.
And my understanding is Dr. Herring has met with the leaseholders association to try to address or lay their fears. If you want to, if you want to speak, feel free to come on up.
Robert Cooley, 8271 Gulf Boulevard.
Linda Cooley, same address.
Yeah, we did meet with Dr. Herring. We're not speaking today for the leaseholders themselves because the leaseholders has not discussed this at a meeting or come to any kind of for or against. But the things that he told us that he was going to try to do, we personally don't have any objection to. My understanding is that this does not require change to the master plan. If it does, then we would object to it. My understanding is that it does not. Is, can anybody confirm that?
The attorney should be able to answer that for us.
I believe that is correct.
It is correct that it does not require?
Correct that it does not require, yes, sir.
You know, the only other thing I would say is that up until the time he brought it up to, for rezoning, our potential rezoning, he had the property for sale. So then it took the sign down as he started this process. So I presume that to go from medium density to high density is going to increase the value of that property. So your decisions on that would be affecting his ability to get more money for the property. So just in complete transparency, I think everybody should know that.
Mr. Chairman.
I just want to add one other thing, that we are very definitely against changing the master plan. So if that involves that, then we, then we do have a problem. Otherwise, we're very much okay. Thank you.
Come on up. Commissioner Cole, you want to go ahead?
I just, you know, for everybody to know that there is a page that says updated background information that's in public record that basically does state that it does not necessitate the updated Navar Beach master plan and also has several other caveats that Dr. Herring put on himself that I believe he's discussed with the leaseholders association. And under next steps in bold lettering, it says, "Due to the nature of this change, staff will work with the Navar Beach Leaseholders Association to solicit additional input." So we got your back.
And, well, yeah, but not because of who they are. We have everybody's back. Everybody gets input into this entire process, the whole way we go. We hold meetings, we beat it up, we put it out in the press and homeowners associations don't have any more or any less standing than any of the rest of the citizens that come before us. Yes, sir, you had something to say?
Yes, sir, very briefly. I'm Tim Cohen. I live at 1466 Homeport Drive on Navar Beach. I'm also Vice President of the Navar Beach Leaseholders Association. Again, not speaking for the leaseholders association as the Cooley said, but just want to reinforce that the residents of Navar Beach really oppose any change to the master plan, just simply. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, there'll be plenty of opportunities for public input as this works its way through the process. I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item four is discussion of bid in the amount of $11,369 from Mike Moats Builders LLC as the sole bidder on ship emergency repair project and recommend approval to exceed the maximum project limit established in the ship local housing assistance plan. We have backup in your agenda. Are there any questions about this? If not, I will move it to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item five, discussion of a board approval by resolution and a release of restrictive covenant, a request from Loaves and Fishes Soup Kitchen for the sale of the above referenced property to a low-income family. Any questions about this?
Mr. Chairman.
Discussion. Commissioner Cole.
Quite a bit. I'm concerned with things, how many houses they got that they may plan to do this with. They said in their statement they're having a hard time keeping these, these houses occupied, but yet progressive management that bought some of these houses under this program has not had that problem. I'd like the records and the statements from what the purchase price was, how much they've invested in these homes, how much they've collected off of rent, you know, before I would be willing to, you know, put these houses on the market because I could see this as being, you know, just the first one we're starting with because there's several houses that were bought on, under this particular dollars that came available. And then finally, where does the dollars go once it sells? Does it go to Loaves and Fishes? Does it go back into the funding that was available at that time to extend this program? So, you know, does it go back in HHRP? Does it go to Loaves and Fishes? So I got a lot of questions I would have to have answered before, before I'd be willing to vote on this. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Micah Danielson, Pence, Colorado, Florida. I'm the Director of the Transitional Housing Program. At this point, we have four of the homes in Santa Rosa that were purchased with HHRP funds. The, any proceeds would go back to provide shelter, food, clothing, the necessities for people that are living in poverty, that are poor. The problems that we have encountered on the Overman property, excuse me, is that it is kind of far out past the bus routes. So we've had families that we've tried to place in the homes and help them with transportation so that they could get employment to try to transition into self-sufficiency. The transit system that we did have, which was kind of minimal, went away. The transit system that we did have, which was kind of minimal, went away a little over a year ago in Santa Rosa, so at this point, it just, you know, it's almost setting the families up for failure to put them in a home off of the, the path of a transit system. When we decided to sell, there was also an issue with childcare in Santa Rosa, I do believe that that issue has been resolved.
But I still would like to know, you know, one, where it allows those dollars to go, it sounds like to me, back to Loaves and Fishes rather than back into the program.
Commissioner, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think I can answer that one very, fairly succinctly, it was a restrictive covenant recorded at the time of purchase that covers the fact that the money would go back to Loaves and Fishes.
And see, I, I don't understand why that would be, I mean, I can understand, you know, the rent going back to continue maintaining the facility and stuff, but to, to come up with this HHRP money to buy these homes and then a year or two later to allow them to sell them and that profit go to the organization, I, I got a little bit of problem with that. And then I'd like to know where the purchase price was, what we've invested into it compared to what we're planning to sell it for, because basically are we selling it at a loss? So that would be a concern.
And I don't have that information here with me, I apologize, I had been out of town and just got back this morning. Per the deed restriction, and I think that's what you're referring to, the, the deed restriction was that as long as we sold the homes back to low-income families, it helps provide affordable housing stock for families that are living at this point in a situation where they might not otherwise be able to afford purchase.
And what quantifies that, I mean, I'm all for helping people get in a shelter, that's not, the question is, where are we gonna, how are we gonna maintain, you know, if that person gets financing, how do we know, and we never would, the capability of maintaining that and next thing you know, the house is, you know, foreclosed on or something, so I, I just think we're on a slippery slope here until we answer all that questions, or you could provide me where we've done this in the past and this is how it's worked out and, and that's a positive.
Commissioner, the, the deed restriction requires that the property be sold to a low-income family, ma, it puts a cap on the sales price equal to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars plus any documented improvements that, that Loaves and Fishes has, has put into the property, plus it, it further states that the, the buyer's total monthly payment shall not exceed thirty percent of the family's gross income, so it has to be by definition affordable housing for the low-income family that purchases it. So that's, that's a backstop to hopefully guard against any foreclosure down the road. I think the, you know, the, the big thing would be if, if you're unable to, to utilize this property and everything you said makes sense about, you know, the reasons that it's not ideal for low-income families, this will put a significant amount of money back into your programs that you can help those others in our community who, who need assistance with housing.
Can I ask this then, how, the, you have four houses, are the other three doing well, they're staying rented?
Two are not, that particular property and the property next to it are not, they're both in the Baghdad area, the two on Warren Road are occupied. In addition to our transitional houses, Family Promise of Santa Rosa also has several transitional houses and so we do have enough transitional houses to help the families through the twenty-four month program between what Loaves and Fishes has and Family Promise. The transportation is one of the single hardest problems to get around. With our program, the families that go into the program are required to find employment within sixty days and to place someone into a home that maybe has three young children or even one young child and then say you must get a job, well, right in the, the Overman area, there are not that many places for employment if you don't have transportation, so it limits the population that we can put in the home or it sets a family up for failure to say to, I'll just use the mother with three young children, to say you must get a job, but you must get your children to childcare and do it without a public transit system or without an automobile.
Mr. Chairman. Oh, we can look for the, you say you got two side by side there?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
So we could look for the other one to come up to possibly a same.
This actually covers both homes on Overman.
Oh, does? Okay.
Commissioner?
Yeah, have you thought about approaching the churches that support Family Promise? I know my church does, I know we have a lot of church buses that sit more or less idle during the week, so if transportation's a problem, don't look to the government, come to the churches, see if we can't find some transportation to shuttle these people around and help them look for jobs.
I'm the former Executive Director of Family Promise and that is what we were doing. Before, I went back to Loaves and Fishes and Loaves and Fishes does not want to particularly compete with Family Promise in Santa Rosa with the churches.
It's not competition, we're trying to get people jobs and a place to live, so it's not somebody versus somebody, it's, it's a group effort.
I agree, I agree, the bottom line for all of us is that we help the families move into self-sufficiency and permanent housing.
I would like for you to brief us at some point, maybe the next time you visit us on, on how that transportation issue has come and, because I, I think there's a natural partnership there with the churches.
At this point, Loaves and Fishes is supported by really and truthfully one or two churches in Santa Rosa, the, the transitional program, not the overall ministry.
Yes, ma'am, I understand, this is, this is a great organization and, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, unless there are any other questions, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And item six is, is discussion of board approval for, of request for proposal to be advertised for preventative maintenance plans for two APC UPS units located in the Emergency Management Communications Center, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Here and none it passes.
And that concludes Public Services.
Next is Public Works Committee, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of resurfacing the following roads in District, Working District Four at an estimated cost of fifty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. Lakeside Drive from Cynthia Street to Saint James Street, Saint James Street, Cynthia Street, northern two hundred and twenty feet, and three notch trail from McClellan Cemetery, point seven-six miles northward. I do so without objection.
Here and none, it passes.
Item number two is discussion of paving Johnny Parker Road in Working District Four at an estimated cost of forty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, unless there's any question, I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item three is discussion of one-year extension with the agreement, of the agreement with Contact Engineering Solutions LLC for corrugated aluminum culvert pipe at the existing rate schedule. Do so without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item four is discussion of providing a letter of support for a proposal by the Florida Department of Transportation for intersection improvements on US ninety at Pace Lane and Kaiser Lane. I'll open that to the floor for discussion. Seeing no discussion, I'll move that to Thursday without objection. I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Thank you. Item five is discussion of encroachment agreement with Sandra K. Shinnick. As trustee of the Sandra K. Shinnick Family Trust and Futures Signs for Encroachment of Swimming Pool into Drainage and Utility Easement on Lot Fifty-Six, Block B of Sundell State Phase Two, open that to the floor for discussion, it's been looked at by our Public Works Director, they have no objections to the encroachment agreement with the owner. Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes Public Works Committee.
Last, next to the last is Budget Finance Committee, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Item number one is budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash oh seven eight in the amount of forty-two, four thousand, two hundred dollars from boat registration fee in, in the general fund to fund the boating restriction regulation signs near the Oyster Pile Boat Ramp in Baghdad, as approved by the Board of Commissioners in a public hearing on November fourteenth, two thousand thirteen. I do so without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item two is budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash oh seventy-nine in the amount of three thousand, five hundred dollars to carry forward unspent funds for the nine-eleven emergency communication specialist training and certifications and registration fee for a reserve reverse nine-one-one education session and in the enhanced nine-one-one program fund. If there's no discussion, I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item three is budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash oh eight zero in the amount of sixty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars to carry forward funds for the maintenance of Ski Watch Canal invoices submitted by HOA, Homeowners Association, in the Ski Watch MSBU Fund. If no discussion, I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item four is budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash zero zero eight one in the amount of three million, fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, carry forward funds in the Road and Bridge Fund for the Small County Outreach Program, SCOP, Resurfacing and Bridge Repair Project on Munson Highway. The FDOT will reimburse seventy-five percent or two million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars of this project through the SCOP grant. This project was approved at the August twenty-second, two thousand thirteen BOCC regular meeting. Unless there's comments or questions, I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Mr. Chairman, I, I will just point out that, you know, it would be up to that amount, if we spend less on the project, it'll just be seventy-five percent, okay, so the, the amount DOT will reimburse will be up to that two million, two ninety-four, one twelve, you know, if we, if we spend less on the project, then the amount they'll reimburse will be less, it'll just be a seventy-five percent match.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whitfield, for clarification. Still no objections or comments, I'll leave that moved. Item five, budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash oh eight two in the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars to fund the purchase of playground equipment for Swinson Park from District Five Recreation Reserves. Any other comments or questions, Commissioner Lynch, ready to roll? Okay, I'll move that to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here and none it passes.
And the final item is county expenditure and check register and I'll, haven't seen that on my desk yet, but I'm sure our finance director will get that there and I'll sign it and get it to the chairman, so I move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and none, I move.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that concludes this report.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public forum, anybody in the public have anything they wish to address, add to, seeing none, here and none, we are adjourned.